All right, calling the November fourteenth meeting to order at 5:31. We are acknowledging that the meeting is being streamed on Zoom and will be available later on YouTube, but we are only taking public comments in person. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items? There is no one here, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. All right, welcome, everybody. We are reconvening at six o'clock. We are going to continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up, we have our special recognitions, reports, and presentations. And first, we have the introduction of our new Director of Food Services and Nutrition.
All right, I'd like to welcome to the front Brian DeForre. So you can stand right there, Brian. All right, so we are pleased to announce Brian DeForre is the new Director of Food Services and Nutrition at Petaluma City Schools. Brian will assume his new duties on December 1st, 2023. Brian returns to a PCS community he knows well. Brian served in PCS since 2020 as the Tobacco Education Prevention Program Coordinator, the COVID-19 Coordinator during the pandemic, and assisted with student and family engagement. Brian initially had a long career in the financial services industry where he held leadership roles for Morgan Stanley, Citigroup, and Fidelity Investments. After deciding to leave that career behind, Brian focused his professional life on service to the community by going back to school for nutrition. He soon began as the Assistant Health and Wellness Coordinator for the Roseland School District. Brian developed and taught after-school nutrition program called Healthy Bites at McDowell Elementary, taught the nutrition component of Petaluma Bounties Alive Program for the families, and founded the Happy Healthy Club at Pengrove Elementary and served as co-chair of the Sonoma County Healthy Students Initiative. Brian looks forward to the challenges and opportunities in the food services and nutrition. He is passionately committed to working on issues related to food and health, like food equity, food justice, access to nutrition, affordable food, food insecurity, and nutrition education. Brian believes that all the tools at our disposal to make meaningful change for kids, there is perhaps none more powerful than our school food system. Brian shares, "I think that we are on the cusp of a profound transformation of our school program, and I fully believe that Petaluma City Schools can be a model of a world-class school food program. I'm grateful and excited to play a part in it." Brian grew up on the East Coast in Salem, Massachusetts, and moved to San Francisco in 2001. He lives in Pengrove with his wife Carrie, two kids Jack and Grace, and their dog Emmy Lou. He is finishing his Master's in Public Health from Cal State Northridge with a concentration in Community Health Education. Brian holds national accreditation as the Nutrition and Dietetics technician, registered with the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and a Dietary Service Supervisor Certificate, and the Safe Serve Food Protection Manager Certification. Brian is also a board member for Healthy Petaluma District and Foundation, and the Northern California Center for Well-Being, and is the Chair of the Santa Rosa Junior College Diet and Nutrition Programs Advisory Board. Congratulations to Brian on his new role in Petaluma City Schools. We are fortunate to have him leading this department.
Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, man, I was afraid you were gonna ask me that. I just would like to say that as a parent of two students in our district, the school food environment has been something that's been important to me since the, every day since the day they showed up at Pengrove. And as a school wellness professional, I just really believe in the tremendous impact that the food program can have on the health and well-being of students, staff, and families. And I also understand the huge responsibility that the food program has to the community that it serves. So along those lines, I'm a really big fan of food service staff. So, and I really appreciate all they do for our kids every day, so I'm honored to join them. I'm super excited about the really cool things that we, as a community, can do with this food program. And I'm thankful, thankful to Matthew, and Jason, and Amanda for the investment of time you gave me in the evaluation process. And thankful to the board for considering me. I've had a couple jobs here in the district, and I cherish those professional relationships I made here. My kids are here, my friends are here, my friends' kids are here. And so PCS is my home team, and so I'm really grateful for the opportunity to serve this district that I care about and this function that I'm really passionate about. So thank you very much, thank you.
Very exciting, thank you. All right, next up, get to recognize some of our students. I believe first up is Kenneworth.
Our November Student of the Month, Emory Devil. Emory's teachers have recognized him as Student of the Month because he is clever, friendly, polite, responsible, and an all-around wonderful young person. Having moved just before his eighth-grade year to Petaluma from North Carolina, Emory has adjusted incredibly well and is thriving at Kenneworth Junior High. When asked what some of his personal accomplishments were, Emory expressed pride in being able to handle the transition between schools and apply his previous knowledge in such a different environment. He demonstrates academic excellence in all that he does, maintaining a GPA to be proud of. Emory's teachers were enthusiastic in their praise of him. Ms. Fahy, Emory's physical education teacher, shared Emory is a model student. He is attentive to instruction and executes each lesson with precision. He is not only an excellent student, but he is a great classmate as well. He is willing to help others when they don't understand. He is also willing to demonstrate skill and techniques during class demonstrations. He is humble, kind, and respectful. He is also an amazing runner, and I look forward to watching him during track season. Outside of school, Emory is an avid rower at North Bay Rowing Club, practicing at least three times per week and more as he heads into competition season. Emory's other hobbies include finding joy and making a variety of fresh pastas with his mom and fishing and crabbing with local family members in Bodega Bay. Emory's favorite subjects in school is math, sharing that it comes naturally to him and could be an area of focus as he moves through the rest of his education and eventually career path. Those close to Emory describe him as trustworthy and loyal. Emory displays a calmness and maturity beyond his years, and the staff at Kenneworth see a very bright future for this young man in whatever he chooses to do. Congratulations, Emory.
Kenneworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our November Student of the Month, Helen Garcia. Helen has been selected by her team of teachers as a Student of the Month because she is selfless, independent, and committed to making the world around her a better place. Ms. Romano, Helen's leadership teacher, says, "When I think about Helen, I think about a young lady who quietly and efficiently gets the job done. There is no fanfare or comments, just some small clarifying questions and a strong worth ethic and a desire to get the work and task at hand completed and completed well. She is kind to her classmates, to the cult community she serves through leadership, and to adults. Helen is dependable, sweet, giving of her time, and all-around a delight to have in class. Helen is a proud member of the leadership and loves to see a smile on a student and staff's face when all the hard work to put on, when all the hard work to put on a special event has come together as a fun rally, dance, or lunch activity. Helen also works to give back to those in the larger community, volunteering at her family church every chance she gets. Helen has already set her sights on helping, on a helping profession once she finishes her educational path, with plans to volunteer at local hospitals during her high school years and to only one day become a nurse after attending a prestigious university. When Helen is not giving back to those around her, she finds time to engage in some of her favorite hobbies, including swimming, reading, and traveling with her family. Having been to such places as Europe and South America, Helen has found learning about new cultures and traditions to have broadened her worldview and deepened her passion to support humanity. Helen is a gem, and Kenneworth is immensely proud to call her a cult. Congratulations, Helen."
Congratulations, and we would like to invite Emory and Helen's friends and family to please stand and be acknowledged as well. All right, thank you. Next up, we have Petaluma Junior.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our November Student of the Month, Glenn Roberts. Ms. O., Glenn's art teacher, shared that Glenn is an outstanding artist who is always an independent thinker. They always said that Glenn is kind, polite, hardworking, and gets along well with others. Mr. D. states that Glenn is a responsible and respectful student who is intelligent and consistently demonstrates quality, effort, and performance. Ms. Peterson shared that Glenn had been an amazing student all year, hard worker, focused, kind, and respectful. Glenn has the ability to work well with anyone in the room, as well as individually. Glenn puts a lot of care into their work. Mr. Evelyn had this to say about Glenn. Glenn is a talented, hard-working, focused, a great student, and a pleasure to have in the band. When we asked Glenn what they enjoy most about PJHS, Glenn said that they enjoy art and band because the activities are engaging and the teachers make it even more fun. Outside of school, Glenn plays saxophone and plays on a travel soccer team. Additionally, Glenn is currently in the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. Looking forward to high school, Glenn is looking forward to playing on the soccer team and taking the different electives offered. Glenn is also excited to meet new people. After high school, Glenn hopes to enter the Air Force Academy to study aerospace engineering. Then Glenn would like to fly jets for the Air Force or get hired by NASA. Glenn's mom shared that Glenn has grown so much in their past year at Petaluma Junior High. They have learned to take responsibility for the schoolwork, and their goal is now to take all the advanced classes and maintain all As. Glenn wants to attend the highly competitive Air Force Academy program and fly military jets and someday work for NASA. This year, they join the Civil Air Patrol Media. In addition, Glenn has played defense on a very competitive year-round travel soccer team for the last six years. Their team won the NorCal State Cup in their division last year, and they have won several tournaments over the years with their team. Outside of school and sports, Glenn lives camping in national parks, visiting family in Michigan every summer, and playing with their dog, Jockster. They also enjoy cultivating houseplants and collecting vintage items from thrift stores and using their antique typewriter. It is an honor to recognize Glenn Roberts as PJHS November Student of the Month. Congratulations, Glenn.
Can Glenn's friends and family please stand so we can acknowledge you as well?
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our November Student of the Month, Kylie Lewis. Ms. Peterson, Kylie's science and STEM teacher, had this statement about Kylie. Kylie is an outstanding student in both STEM and science. I'm so thankful to have her in two of my classes. She works so hard and puts so much care, attention, and creativity into her work. She is kind, respectful, and one of the most responsible students I've ever met. Ms. Garvey, math teacher, said that Kylie is determined, focused, and does an excellent job at all of her assignments. In addition, she is polite, kind, and works well with other students. She overcomes obstacles with grace. Kylie said that her favorite thing about PJHS has been meeting new people and hanging out with all of her friends. Kylie also noted that she enjoys Ms. Peterson's science and STEM classes all year because she has fun projects, a good sense of humor, and enjoys being with her students. Outside of school, Kylie does gymnastics three days a week. She is working to rehab ankle injury in hopes of competing this year. Kylie also volunteers as a junior coach. In addition to gymnastics, Kylie enjoys riding dirt bikes and hunting with her family. Kylie is looking forward to joining the FFA program at Petaluma High in addition to being reunited with some of her older friends. After high school, Kylie hopes to earn a degree in occupational therapist and pursue a career in helping kids age zero to six with fine motor skills. Kylie's parents are incredibly proud of her. They share that Kylie is hardworking, dedicated, loving, kind, and loyal, and that she always strives to put forward her personal best in everything she does. Kylie's parents said that Kylie takes her schoolwork seriously and is shown in the grade she earns. Additionally, Kylie absolutely loves children. She is a popular babysitter and even earned her CPR certificate recently. Overall, Kylie's parents are extremely proud of how hard Kylie works and how well-rounded she is. They can't wait to see what path life has for her and all of her amazing things that she will do in the future. Congratulations, Kylie.
And can Kylie's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged? Wonderful, okay, up next, we have Casa.
Hello, I'm Ava Nowerski from Costa Grande's ASB. Our first student of the month can't be here unfortunately, but he is Sammy Cooper Smith. Sammy looks forward to studying biomedical engineering in college. He has a strong interest in medicine with his favorite subjects being biology and chemistry. During his time at Casa, he is proud to have won science fairs and chemistry competitions. He also takes pride in helping the community. One way he does this is through his environmental advocacy club, which planted over 50 trees on our campus. His proudest achievement is the research he completed in New York over the summer, where he demonstrated the viability of a novel P12 peptide as an antithrombotic agent. He will head to Boston in a few weeks to present his finding at an international conference. Outside of academics, Sammy enjoys competing with his soccer team. He is known for loving all things outdoors, especially skiing and mountain biking. In the future, he hopes to contribute to the innovation of medicine and either go into a STEM cell in regenerative biology research or become a vitreous retinal surgeon. Congratulations, Sammy. Next, we have Ryan Camella. Ryan is a senior at Costa Grande High School. He enjoys science and math courses, courses, especially chemistry and calculus. His academic achievements include five honors classes, five AP classes, and 11 JC classes. He will be just shy of completing GE requirements for college by the time he graduates his high school. At an early age, Ryan has had a passion for learning how things work. In his free time, he enjoys working on cars with his dad. Upon graduation, he plans on majoring in mechanical engineering, where he can further this interest. Outside of school, Ryan has served his community by contributing over 150 hours at the Redwood Empire Food Bank. While there, he obtained his food handler certificate so that he could work in the kitchen. One of Ryan's greatest accomplishments is running varsity for Costa Grande's cross-country and track team. He is the fastest-returning athlete in the league for the 3,200 yards. Congratulations, Ryan.
And can Ryan's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged? All right, up next, Petaluma High School.
Hi, guys, nice to see you all. Okay, so first up, we have Hope. So Hope Carver is a senior at Petaluma High School and has been actively involved in both school and community activities since a young age. So far during her time at Petaluma High School, Hope has been active in Circle of Friends Club and has been co-present for the past two years. Hope is also involved in ASB, helping out with posters, campus spirit events, and rallies. Hope can be counted on to dress up in all-out purple every Friday and participate in any Trojan Spirit Day that ASB has planned. Hope has also been an active participant in the Special Olympic Basketball, Track and Field, and Soccer events throughout the school year. She is a friendly and welcoming classmate to her peers and can be heard calling hello to her friends during transitions between classes. When Hope is not at school, she enjoys playing basketball, kicking the soccer ball around, doing art, listening to music, reading, and blowing bubbles. Hope also enjoys playing baseball in the Miracle League, which she has done for three years. Hope feels excited and proud to be chosen as Student of the Month. She would like to thank her parents, her teachers, and her brothers for always helping her and being there for her. Congratulations, Hope.
And can we have Hope's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged as well?
And next up, okay, next up, we have Luis Membria Martinez. So Luis is a senior at Petaluma High School. His dedication to maintaining high grades reflects his commitment to securing a bright future, particularly in his pursuit of his dream of being in the career of, oh my gosh, sorry. You'd think I'd be used to this now. Particularly in the pursuit of his dream career as an airline pilot, he is a member of the EAA Experimental Aircraft Association, a community that has played a significant role in shaping his passion for aviation. Luis plans to continue his education at the Santa Rosa Junior College, a practical choice that allows him to continue his involvement in the aviation community while working towards his bachelor's degree. He enjoys welding and has lots of fun while doing it, building and flying radio-controlled airplanes, taking apart and putting back together electronics, and building things out of wood and metal. He has a ham radio license, also known as an amateur radio, and has the highest one out of three licenses. He enjoys talking to people worldwide. He is also working on perfecting his Morse code skills, and he also has his driver's license, boater's license, and pilot's license. Every Saturday, he dedicates his mornings to volunteering at the Sonoma Sky Park, contributing his construction to an airplane called the Python Pole. Sorry if I butcher that. This hands-on experience not only hones his technical skills, but also allows to him to get back to the community that has helped pave his passion for aviation. He also volunteers to help with a fundraiser, which uses the money they can earn towards helping teens like him succeed in aviation. He also volunteers every second Sunday of each month, where he makes sure that kids and other people don't go up to airplanes without pilots, since that could be a safety hazard. This day is called Young Eagles Day, and if you are under the age of 18, you can get a free flight. He would like to encourage others to follow their dreams. Congrats to you, Luis.
And can we have Luis's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged? Wonderful, right, next up, we have Mary Collins at Cherry Valley.
Hi, I'm Claire Griffin. I'm delighted to be presenting Marie Wileback to you as one of our MCCV students of the semester. Marie and I have known each other since preschool. We've both have been on campus since then. Ever since I can remember, Marie has always been nice to everyone, and she shows incredible kindness to our campus. Marie is always up to helping out the community, for example, being a TA for our mentor reading program, occasionally helping with organizing our Food for Thought signups, and helping out on the variety show. Her main hobbies are rowing at North Bay Rowing and golf, which she wishes to pursue throughout high school. Marie's grade averages are As and A pluses with 3.5 GPA. Marie enjoys both of her electives, which are leadership and art, so she can show off her natural-born leadership and creativity. Besides electives, Marie's favorite classes are math and science. Once she graduates from Mary Collins, she plans on attending either Petaluma High, MSA, or Cardinal Newman. Her favorite, her current dream colleges are UCLA or the University of Michigan. Congratulations, Marie.
And can we have Marie's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged?
Hi, my name is Isla Rayner. It's an honor to be here to help celebrate and recognize Luca Middleton Healy for being student of the semester. Luca has attended Cherry Valley since kindergarten. Her friends know her as a person they can always come to for anything. Her peers know her for being comfortable, for being a comfortable and easy person to talk to. And her teachers know her for being a student they can count on to make good and logical decisions. When talking about academics, Luca strives far and wide. Her grades have remained straight As throughout both her seventh and eighth-grade years and has kept a 4.0 GPA. Academics aside, Luca also has a love for soccer and has been playing for North Coast for three years, but started playing soccer at the age of five. She loves reading and writing, and even wrote and presented last year for Student of the Semester Faith Grolnick. When Luca graduates middle school, she'll go to Petaluma High, where she wants to join the volleyball team, do track, and possibly play soccer. After high school, Luca wants to attend college and hopefully do something to help people, like be an EMT or work in the medical field. Any patient would be lucky to have her. The thing that Luca loves most is her older sister, Mira, who she will be in high school with for one year. Mira also attended Cherry Valley and led the way for Luca. Her positive attitude and welcoming presence are known throughout the school. I couldn't think of a better person to be student of the semester. Congratulations.
All right, can we have Luca's friends and family please stand and be acknowledged? All right, congratulations, everyone. We are going to take a five-minute break.
She's like, what is this?
All right, once we have Trustee Cloud back in her seat, we'll be able to begin. Hello, Trustee Cloud. Thank you for joining us. All right, that was wonderful, as always. Okay, next up, we have our CAPS presentation.
Great, thank you. To support our initiative with CTE and Climate Action Resolution, we are seeking a partnership with the Climate Action Pathways for Schools, otherwise known as CAPS. And at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Osman, our College and Career CTE Coordinator, to give us more information about CAPS.
Thank you, Tony. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Kirk Ann Taylor, the Executive Director of CAPS. And she joined CAPS in 2022 as Executive Director, although I think worked with CAPS for years before that. Ms. Taylor comes to CAPS with more than 20 years of experience in nonprofit management, education, and sustainability. Before joining CAPS, she was the Director of Community Engagement for Ten Strands, overseeing advocacy, communications, strategic planning, and supporting the California Environmental Literacy Initiative, a public-private partnership advancing environmental literacy for California's 6.2 million public school students. A little context, I first encountered CAPS almost two years ago. We were on a school tour, a model school tour down in Central Valley, and many of us here traveled to Lindsay Schools last year. And just about 45 minutes south of there is the town of Porterville. And Porterville has been a model pathway district for decades. And there, as part of the meet-and-greet the night before the big tour, there were a number of students of student groups presenting, and one of them was CAPS, a group of students that CAPS had worked with in internships that you will soon learn more about. And I can tell you, I was absolutely blown away by the sophistication of the students, their engagement, what they were presenting, and it was data. It was data that they collected across the district that then the district used to garner some significant resources. So I think it's apropos, following up on our conversation we had last week, as we imagine how our programs can be more career-connected, more outward-facing, engaging our students to do really rich, rigorous, high-quality work-based learning. I think CAPS is a fantastic venue for that, so very excited to welcome Kirk Ann.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here and to share a little bit about the work that we're doing at Climate Action Pathways for Schools and think about a potential partnership with Petaluma City Schools. First, I'll say I have a relationship and a pastoral of working with Petaluma City Schools years ago with the environmental literacy planning. As the Next Generation Science Standards came down the pathway, and we were looking at how do we integrate with local community partners, a series of activities connected to the Next Generation Science Standard, so that every student had access to environmental learning. And then over the last several years, I joined Climate Action Pathways for Schools, and I really love the work that we're doing. It's very hands-on and tangible. We're partnering with school districts' operations and with students to develop climate action strategies that help those school districts reduce greenhouse gas emissions and save money. And in the process, students are leading the change within their districts and preparing for college and their future careers. So when I learned about CAPS, I put my hand up and wanted to be a part of it, because it's just such a wonderful, I think, win-win opportunity. And so I'll just share a little bit about what that looks like for us and the way that we've worked with school districts. We are a new and growing nonprofit organization. We're based here in the Bay Area, I'm four years old. And we partner with operations, as I mentioned earlier, and we look across school district systems to identify areas where we can take on sustainability projects that will help the district in things like buildings' energy efficiency, the transition of vehicles from, you know, gas to electric, food, water, waste. We look at all of those areas, and students gather data and work with career professionals in sustainability careers and develop a plan for how to get there. And we do that through an internship program. Students typically work with us for multiple years. We partner with the district's pathway or CTE programs, and over the course of time, we stay in contact with those students, too. Many of the students we work with are now off in college or their career. We also foster an alumni network for students as they move on into the next phase of their career. We have grown in the last several years. We've started with working with Porterville Unified School District, as was mentioned earlier, and are still in partnership with them. We also work with Lindsay Unified School District, Twin Rivers, Modesto, and Morgan Hill as well. And one of the main impacts of our program, and I'll give you an example of what this has looked like in Porterville, is that just in the first two years of the program there, we were able to help the district reduce its greenhouse gas emissions from buildings by 28%. And we did that by first doing an energy audit. Students went out and did an energy audit of each school site. They were each assigned a school site. They worked with a mechanical engineer who's on our staff, as well as the buildings and maintenance and facility staff, and did a baseline. And then every month, they do monitoring and reporting, and this is still going on. So on a monthly basis, students are producing reports, working with operations, but they're also socializing across the district and school sites, working with their peers, working with teachers and others to implement strategies to help put in place conservation measures that will help the district continue to make those strides. And we've helped the district as well, and just in the first few years, they saved 850,000 in energy costs due to these measures that were taken on, and we've continued to do that. And we partner to secure funding. We've been leveraging Inflation Reduction Act funding, state funding, now in Porterville to the tune of about 15 million over the last four years. That funding helps to take on infrastructure projects, so purchasing electric vehicles or upgrading lighting and HVAC systems across the schools. But we also fold in strategies for expanding the work-based learning programs and creating apprenticeships and getting student certification in different areas of sustainability. And so that's a key part of our program, too, is not just with the helping of the cost savings through energy reduction, but going out and looking for where do we seek funding to continue the implementation in the long run. And a key part of the program really is about, and the heart of it, is about helping students find meaningful and high-paying career paths. And we know that to reach California's climate goals and our goals as a society in general, we need more people in these fields. And we've recently been working with Accenture, a global consulting firm, to map what's that green sustainability career growth going to look like in California over the next several decades, and how are we going to get there? We've been correlating career paths to the kind of project areas that students can do within their school communities. And we are predicting that California will create more than 4 million new green jobs in the next 30 years, and we need to be preparing students now for what those future careers are going to look like. And so that's a big part of our approach is to helping to foster that, so that students can take advantage of those higher-paying green career opportunities as they move forward. Just to give you another example, we really have students leading the climate action. So in Porterville, it started with this Buildings Energy Program, but over time, we moved into some additional areas. And you see here cohort of students that helped the district with implementing its first six new electric vehicles. We've moved on and have continued to secure additional funding so that they can start to transition their entire fleet. Students are also working within the community to promote active transportation, look at how we better optimize those bus routes, how do we gather data about vehicle models traveled, and who's using which kind of transportation? And so the projects really unfold over time, and one step leads to the next, with students really championing the actions. And another core, two other core things that we focus on as an organization is really looking at environmental justice, and that means for us, within the communities that we're focused on, partnering with which communities are most impacted by climate disproportionately. How do we make sure that the strategies we put in place especially center those students in their experiences, and so that we can create strategies that really change the dynamic? And we're also wanting to make sure we amplify youth voice, and so the way that that plays out is that students are working at board meetings, they're presenting in the community, they're out there gathering, and they're the ones, you know, leading that change and helping to come up, take the data, make sense of it, and come up with solutions that they're driving forward. So that's our organization in a nutshell and our approach, and I'm really honored to have the opportunity to explore partnership with Petaluma City Schools. And we look forward to, I can answer any questions or whatever else you need from me right now. Thank you.
Shamaya, do you have any questions? No? Does anyone else have any questions? Or comments? Yeah?
Yeah, this sounds great. You had, you used a word early in your presentation that we need, which is strategy. We've been very opportunistic so far with all of our efforts in sustainability, cutting greenhouse gases, electrifying our fleet, microgrids, the schools, a lot of stuff, but we haven't had a strategy. That sounds good to me. What, how does, what's our part of the partnership? What do we, what do you need from us?
Well, a big thing that we will need in the process is, you know, access to data and a willingness to kind of work across the silos, and that's one of the things that we try to help do. So that means we'll be looking at, you know, areas of sustainability across the district, that food, water, waste, and we need to base our calculations on the data, like what's currently happening, so that we can make projections about what we can then work on moving forward. So that's one of the main things that we need, is just collaboration on that. I mean, essentially, the students that work in this project are working for the school district. We're facilitating a process, but they're here to help support that overarching strategy. So collaboration.
Do we contract with you, or what is the?
Yeah, it's a contract with our organization, and we facilitate the process with the students, but they're working with operations within their school sites, you know, sharing information about different strategy implementation. After we have an overarching strategy, what are the implementation measures that need to happen to help us reach our goals?
How are students chosen to be interns or to go into the internships?
Yeah, so it's in different school districts, we've taken different approaches, but what essentially we do is that we have a process in which we have an open application. We've partnered with specific career pathways where that's made sense. So for example, in Porterville, we started with Academy of Engineering. We were doing a Building Energy Program, and then students applied to be in the program and go through a process of that. We're now working at that district across five different pathways. And with the new districts that we've been working with, we've cultivated a recruitment engagement strategy that fits within their school culture and follows their guidance of how they want us to approach that.
And this is a class?
It's outside of school time, although there are some times where students are going into classrooms and presenting information so that they're raising awareness. But it's typically two to four hours a week of time they're meeting with us, but then they also have projects that they're working on in between, and then we're connecting back in. So they have assignments, and they're working in teams on that. And then we typically do a summer more in-depth training program.
To clarify, this is a paid internship for our students?
Yes, this is paid.
I was just wondering, I really love that it's student-focused, you know, and that they're driving a lot of it and collecting, and that it's cross-sites, and that they're communicating leadership, all of those things. I really love all of that. And working with the community on active transportation. And I was just wondering how it works. I mean, it sounds like it's secondary primarily. So will there be, is there like possibly something that you could work on to get our elementary sites and schools and programs kind of going in that direction? Do you have anything like that in any of your?
The internship is for the high school students, but the school site, we work across the whole school campuses. And so even though you might have a student that's not from that school campus, because they're a high school student working in the elementary school, they do that, and we would be wanting to connect. There's already, as I mentioned earlier, when I started, the environmental literacy planning that's happened in the K8 level for the district, so we'll be wanting to tie into that. There's the Climate Action Committee, so it'd be through those kinds of collaborations that we would, we don't want to duplicate what's already going well and working well, but we want to amplify and like kind of build, make the bigger, the pieces add up to something greater, like have the greater strategy reflected.
So this isn't a typical CTE where there's three classes with a capstone at the end?
Correct, although we could develop some modules for a capstone down the road, but what we're talking about initially in the proposal that we have forward is to launch the internship program with, doing the climate action plan and coordination with the Climate Action Committee.
Okay, thanks.
And this is all high schoolers, or is it just certain grade levels?
We would take the district's guidance, but typically we've worked with juniors and seniors.
Further questions or comments or anything?
And I think maybe it might be important to know that the agreement with them is funded out of our CTE, so it's a grant fund, so there's no cost other than the grant funds that we already have for it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, next up, we have the public hearings. I'm going to open the, I might use Caitlin's help with this. I'm going to open the public hearing in regards to the new parcel tax outlined in Resolutions 2324-13 and 2324-14.
Let me just give a outline of the speakers. In other words, conduct that you usually do for?
Oh, the board policy, okay. I am going to read our public, our, I can't even talk right now, our board policy for public comment, and it will apply to all of, not just this public comment period, but to the subsequent ones as well. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3A, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted and written to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter." Do we have any public?
We don't have any cards. Anyone who wants to?
But if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this item, about the parcel tax? All right.
Haven't had to be in front of here for a long time. My name's Maureen Rutter. I'm a retired administrator from Petaluma City Schools, but I'm here today as a citizen of Petaluma and a grandparent of children in the school district, and the parent of a teacher and a mother-in-law of another teacher. And I just want to say that I was really happy when I got the brochure in the mail last week, that you're exploring the idea of having a parcel tax to focus on bringing teachers' wages up. I've been working once in a while in Novato, in their school district, and up here, and I can tell you, it's really hard to get teachers right now because of the pay, and especially new teachers. So I think it's something that we, as a district, really have to focus on, is how to bring up the pay so that our teachers can afford to live here. And that's, I think, the major issue right now is unless, you know, my daughter-in-law is married to my son, so they have two incomes coming in, so they can afford to live here in town. My son, who's a single person, it's really hard to pay rent on a teacher salary. So I think, I wish there were more people here to say that we should be moving forward, and I hope that this is a real focus as this year progresses.
All right, next up, we have Leah.
Never been to a public meeting before, but I also support this. I think the, there was a line in the brochure that said there can be an opportunity for folks who are, I can't remember if it was seniors or just low-income, to opt out. I think that's super important, especially because a lot of times, well, the folks who have more time to come to these sorts of meetings might, you know, have the flexibility to kind of create an atmosphere where there isn't as much, there seems to be not as much support as there may actually be. The other thing is, I don't know if this is useful, but I recently heard maybe a Freakonomics podcast that talked about the cost that talked about the cost of not having well-equipped teachers or five-day school weeks. And like the kind of trying to quantify the cost in comparison to like a $60 parcel tax. Something like that, I think, would be super useful to kind of show, you know, $60 on, I don't know what you all are considering, but something that seems like it could be big is actually small. And then putting that in comparison to some of the long-term costs where folks, you know, kids are not performing at level or able to, you know, X, Y, Z, whatever data can be gathered. But definitely support and hope to see more.
Thank you, welcome. Appreciate you being here, both of you, your comments. Are there any other comments from the public on this item? All right, before we close the public hearing, is there anything else that anyone would like to say?
I'm excited that all of our public comments were in favor. When does that happen? I think that's a really good sign that the community will support this very necessary and overdue measure. You know, I wish our federal government or our state government invested in public schools the way that they ought to. But I have faith in our community to really step up and fund things so that our students and our teachers and the rest of our staff are equipped to do the best jobs they can.
Very well said, Caitlin. Anyone else have anything to add on this? I mean, I know it's going to be up for a vote later, but. She did. All right, and with that, we will close the public hearing. Move on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, now's the time to come up and speak about that. Do we have anyone, anyone that maybe did not fill out a card that would like to speak about something? Okay, all right. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. I hope everyone's comfortable because this is a really long list. If I can log into my computer. All right, so since the last school board meeting, professional development subcommittee, arts committee meeting, safety committee meeting, LCAP, Cool Petaluma Meeting for input on PCS schools' impact on the city of Petaluma's blueprint for carbon neutrality. That's a super long title. Active Transit Plan Open House, Halloween at the, at the district office with Valley Vista TK and kindergarteners visiting. PPSC Bowl Painting Fundraiser, McKinley Sixth Grade Camp Fundraiser, United Anglers of Costa Grande Fundraiser Dinner, Community Arts Discussion, Press Conference with Assemblyman or Assemblymember Connolly, Tara Verde, and other local leaders about preserving schools' right to use the solar power we generate. California Public Utilities Commission Meeting about changes to onsite net metering for schools using solar power. Meeting with Press Democrat Trust, Casa Varsity Girls, sorry, Junior Varsity Girls Basketball Game, Sonoma State President's Commission on Teacher Education, and Office Hours at Petaluma Junior, Mary Collins at Cherry Valley, Kenilworth, McNear, McKinley, Grant, and McDowell, and our Student Board Members, Football Game, Childhood Cancer Relief Meeting, Bi-Pot Club, and Environmental Club. We just got to give it up for all of our.
I forgot one too, Dia de los Muertos at McDowell was awesome.
Does anyone want to share anything about any of their activities? Okay.
I just want to mention, I know there's no students here right now, but of the committees that I'm on, we would love to see student participation. The Safety Committee, the Arts Committee, those, we're making decisions that are going to affect our students. So it would be great. I would love to see more students there.
I'll just talk really quickly about the press conference in the California Public Utilities Commission. The California Public Utilities Commission is considering changing rules that would basically force us to sell our solar back to PG, to PG&E and then buy it back at a rate higher than we sell it for because we have multiple meters on one site. They're trying to protect this, or right now it's protected for homeowners. They try to do it to homeowners too. But this would affect farms, this would affect schools, this would affect apartment buildings, really cutting off all of our ability to act, not only access solar energy, but fight carbon emissions and fight for a green future or any future at all, really. So if I'll try and, I sent you all a little bit of information, I'll try and send you all more. I believe the California Public Utilities Commission is meeting again on the 16th or 17th, so this week, 16th. You can call in and give public comment on the phone. They're, they're hearing from some schools, but I'm hoping to speak again on behalf of our school district because we've been using solar since I was a student. And it saves us so much money every year and it's the right thing to do. So we sure as heck don't want to be helping PG&E at the cost of our students.
Is it just multi-metered places or is it private homes as well?
Multi-meter, they already protected homeowners earlier this year or late last year.
Oh, that's nice of them.
Well, I mean, yes, and.
So did they give a, an explanation of, other than, you know, greed?
Not that I could stay on to hear, there were a lot of public comments and it's during a workday, so.
Appreciate that. Does anyone else have anything to share from any of their activities?
Yeah, just a quick note, I went to a couple of our office hours and I just wanted to share one theme that I'm hearing, that we're hearing at school sites, and that is a feeling of understaffedness in terms of staff onsite being overworked and feeling like they're just barely holding it together. So we, at each of those opportunities, we talked about the parcel tax and what, how that might help out and to encourage them to tell their friends and neighbors to please support it.
Well, I'm really glad that Brian is here. Also at office hours yesterday, and I, I know for the last couple of years, there's been some concern about school lunches. And so I'm just really glad that you're here and working on all of those efforts. There was a comment about, you know, more plant-based or vegetarian lunches as well. Yeah. So yeah, that, and but overall, I mean, there was a couple people who came just to stop by and say hello. So I really appreciate Bree working with the principals and them as well, getting the word out about the office hours that we get more engagement. So thank you for that. Anything else about any of these activities? Shamaya, do you have anything you'd like to speak about? No, okay, all right. Okay, so we will move on to comments from the public on consent items. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak about something on the consent agenda, you may come to the front and speak about it. And again, I know we haven't had any yellow cards, but if there's anyone who would like to talk about something. Doesn't seem like it. Okay, so we are going to move on. Approval of Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Actually, no, you talk, no, I just, I loved, I, I wasn't here when I guess you made the decision to do this. And it's, it's, it's pretty cool. I really liked it. So I was going, when, when did this happen? So anyway, it was great. I wanted to thank you all for doing that. It makes it a lot easier to understand what's, so thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, all right. Moving on, comments from the public on action items. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on any of our action items, I mean, we have, we've heard some, but if there are any more. No, okay, all right. So first up, Resolution 2324-12, recognizing the month of November as Native American Heritage Month.
I move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who, who would like to read? I can, I can, oh, okay.
Resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts, declaring November as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the Native American experience is central to the American story, being the first people to live on the land we all cherish and having profoundly shaped our country's character and our cultural heritage. And whereas from generation to generation, Native Americans handed down invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions which continue to thrive in Native American communities across our nation today. And whereas, since the earliest days of our republic, Native Americans have played a vital role in our country's freedom and security, having served in all branches of America's armed forces. And whereas Native Americans are leaders in every aspect of our society, from the classroom to the boardroom to the battlefield. And whereas Native Americans make up the ranks of both our district's certificated and classified staff as well as our student population. And whereas Native American and Alaskan Native tribal governments are an integral part of the social, political, and economic fabric of the United States. And whereas tribal America has brought to this great country certain values and ideas that have become ingrained in the American spirit. The knowledge that humans can thrive and prosper without destroying the natural, natural environment. The understanding that people from different backgrounds, cultures, religions, and traditions can come together to build a great country. And the awareness that diversity can be a source of strength rather than division. And whereas, while we pay tribute to Native American achievements, we must also acknowledge the parts of our shared history which have been marred by violence and tragic mistreatment. And whereas for centuries, Native Americans faced cruelty, injustice, and broken promises. And whereas our, our tribal communities face stark realities, including disproportionately high rates of poverty, unemployment, crime, and disease. And whereas, Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student, each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas, the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education is committed to enhancing equity, inclusion, diversity, and partnership, and remains dedicated to providing schools and districts with resources and supports to implement the history, social science standards, and civic engagement, and promote an, an understanding of economics, geography, world, and US history and government in schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education proclaims the month of November as Native American Heritage Month.
It's beautiful. Thank you. All right, next up, Resolution 2324-13.
I move to approve. I'm not reading this one into the record.
Matthew, did you want to say anything?
I think it would be helpful to put it, put it into context just a little bit here. So we have, I'm going to speak specifically to the secondary measures. So we have two measures coming up secondary, and then we're going to, the next one, we'll talk a little bit more about the elementary. But I think one of the, the challenges that we've seen recently and why this is kind of coming up now for a March ballot is we're, you know, what Sheldon, what you, you expressed at office hours about feeling this feeling of understaffed. And at secondary schools, right now, we have a bell schedule committee that's meeting. The bell schedule committee, meaning that every student in our, our junior highs and high schools have a chance to take six classes. So you can take first period, second period, third period, all the way, all the way to sixth period. And we would like to, when you think about our, our, our English learners, when you think about our students with disabilities, if you're taking a double English block, block or a double math block, we're really limiting the number of electives that our students can take. Our teachers, staff, our administrators are working on a, on, on a bell schedule, but the question keeps coming back to, well, how do you fund a new bell schedule? If we were to add a seventh period or an eighth period, seventh period or a seventh and eighth period, what would that look like? We, well, what it means is we have to hire more teachers. And from a student's perspective, it's great. You may have slightly shorter classes, but you may have, instead of six classes, you could take seven or potentially eight classes. What for, from the staffing perspective, we need to bring in more teachers, more electives, because then it would give students the opportunity to take more electives. And so with that as sort of this backdrop, I want to just kind of share, I'll read the, the ballot text, what we're talking about and what would actually be on the ballot, kind of what you're voting on tonight, as well as what are the, what are the proposed uses for this? And then what, what is the amount and the term that we're looking at? So it starts off here, Petaluma City Schools provides a high-quality education for approximately 7,200 students, attending seven elementary schools, nine secondary schools, and an adult education school serving the greater Petaluma area. Thanks to excellent teachers and strong support for local junior high and high schools, from parents and the community, local students graduate prepared for college and in-demand careers. Nationally, California ranks among the lowest in funding per student provided to public schools, and Petaluma City Schools receives far less funding than many school districts in the North Bay. And I, I want to just note there, except had several questions about that, that, that some, some school districts, right? About, I think it's about 15% maybe, receive basic aid funding. We don't qualify for basic aid. Everyone else is putting this local control for, funding formula, which kind of has three big, three big buckets in general terms, right? You have your LCFF, your base funding, then you have supplemental funding and concentration grants. So all school districts who are getting their, their LCFF are getting this base funding as we are. We receive some supplemental funding based on our number of students who are qualified as unduplicated. So our, our, our English learners, low socioeconomic status foster and foster youth, homeless and foster youth. And then some districts receive, if you qualify, you have a certain percentage of, of students who get concentration grant, which is a significant boost to your, to your, to your funding, pure, per pupil funding. Petaluma City Schools, we receive some supplemental, but we don't come close to, to concentration grants, like district like Roseland. I think Santa Rosa receives some concentration as well. So in other words, we are getting the base funding and a little bit supplemental. And so that's when we say we're receiving less funding than many school districts in the North Bay or even down in Marin. That, this is why, different, the, the funding model. Okay, over the last three years, Petaluma City Schools has lost close to 40% of our local teachers, with many leaving to work in other nearby school districts that offer higher compensation. We know that the pandemic had a huge impact here, but this, that number, 40% over three years is completely unsustainable. We cannot have that, that sort of massive turnover and expect to just, you know, we lost a lot of institutional knowledge over the last several years. Many Petaluma teachers and school employees have had to take on second and even third jobs in order to support themselves and their families. Having a great teacher in the classroom is the most important element of providing a quality education for students and experienced teachers support high-quality instruction in science, technology, engineering, math, writing, arts, and music. Due to inadequate state funding, Petaluma City Schools Board of Education believes that locally-controlled funding from a school parcel tax is important for keeping great teachers in local classrooms and protecting quality academic programs in local schools, and is putting forth a ballot measure for local voters to consider enhanced funding for local junior high students and high school students that cannot be taken away by the state. If approved by local voters, funds from, from the local school parcel tax measure would be used to attract and retain excellent teachers, enhance science, technology, engineering, math, and writing opportunities for students, maintain smaller class sizes, provide school librarians, and keep school libraries open, and prepare school students for college and careers. The measure would require fiscal accountability protections, including an independent citizen. including an independent citizens oversight committee and mandatory annual audits to ensure funds are spent as promised. None of the money raised by the parcel tax measure could be used for administrator salaries or pensions. All funds from the measure must stay local to benefit local junior high schools and high schools only, and no funds could be taken by the state or used for other purposes. Homeowners aged 65 and over, and certain low-income people with disabilities would be eligible for an exemption from the cost of the measure. The Board believes that even if you do not have school-aged children, investing in quality local schools supports a strong community and strong property values. So, under the terms, this is sort of the allowable uses, and I talked, we talked a lot about, right, supporting teachers and, and teacher pay. And I think that the parcel tax that we have currently that's in perpetuity, right? We know that there was no inflator, we know that we're, we are making a contribution from the general fund into things that typically with the, the parcel tax was supposed to take care of. So this would take some pressure off of the general fund to allow us to continue to give compensation increases to our teachers. And I, the, the, the goal is to bring in additional teachers to, again, you know, we think about career, college and career pathways for students, increasing the number of electives that students can take. It's all kind of goes into that, the, 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 the goal of this parcel tax. So the terms. Monies raised under this measure shall be authorized to be used only for the following purposes, in accordance with priorities established by the Board to the extent of available funds. First, to attract and retain excellent teachers. We know part of it is compensation, yes, and it's also about having enough staff to truly support the school, the function of the school. Number two, to enhance math, science, engineering, technology, and writing programs on our secondary campuses, to maintain smaller class sizes, to prepare students for college and careers, huge need right now. And that no funds will be spent on administrative salaries or benefits. The amount of the basis of the tax, so we're looking at, when we think about a parcel tax, you think of all the parcels in Petaluma, whether it's a, it's, you know, a small parcel with a, a house, or a large parcel with, you know, big barn and acres and acres of land. Each parcel, right, would receive, the parcel tax would be $89 per, per parcel. And this isn't, we're contemplating here, a term of eight years. So it would be a period of eight years. During those eight years, we would then be justifying to the parcel tax committee to say, here's how we're spending the money, so that there's some accountability before we, we, we wanted to keep this as a, we want to hold ourselves accountable for what we're, what we're telling people that we're going to do and actually do it. Over the approximate amount of money that this would raise is about $2.2 million annually for eight years. So that's, that's the information. Any questions?
I just want to acknowledge something that one of the public commenters made about, I just really appreciate that we're looking at different ways to supplement salaries. Because also, as Trustee Quinn noted, we don't get enough from the state. And I have four kids, one of them wants to be a teacher or a counselor, she's not sure yet, but she wants to be an educator. And she gets discouraged all the time. People are like, you're going to be broke, I can make a lot of money. She's like, yeah, my mom's broke. But you know, it's like, or people were like, you're not going to be able to live here, you're going to have to live somewhere else. So it's just, I, I, again, I just appreciate, and I hope that the voters support these measures.
And I think, you know, we saw what, where it's polling, it's polling, it's polling very well. There's a lot of support in the community for this. And it's, it's not, it's not a slam dunk. So we're, we, I mean, to pass something like this, we'll need some, some independent group of people who can really kind of help us to, to get this over the, the, over the finish line. Requires 66.66.7%, two-thirds.
I just wanted to acknowledge our, Aaliyah, your, the commenter about the importance of the cost of not passing it, you know? And, and that, I thought that that was something that I think people don't really realize, you know? And how much, $85, I mean, you can spend that in a week at, at Starbucks. So, you know, just putting that $85 in context. I just, I, I thank you for that comment, because it was really helpful, I think.
All right, anything else before we vote? I don't know, there's like a bug. No, we did not. We did, okay. All in, all in favor? Aye. All right, Resolution, thank you, Matthew, for all the explanation. Resolution 2324-14.
I move to approve.
I second.
So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through, I meant, the, the two resolutions are very, very similar. Obviously, this is the elementary one. I do just want to highlight on the, the elementary one. Whereas, with secondary, we're really looking at this as a, as a potential solution for a, a bell schedule change. In addition, you know, taking some pressure off the, the general fund to, to support increases. This one, there's some similar aspects to this, and we're not, we're not going to be changing the bell schedule for elementary students, but it would take some pressure off the general fund. And when we think about elementary, one of the biggest things that I hear over and over, and I'm sure Maureen heard it, the principal as well, it's elementary teachers feeling like we don't have enough time to, to truly prepare and plan. And so what we're, what we're contemplating with this one is really bringing in additional teachers. Right now, the former parcel tax rate provides not even, it's like three and a half to four music teachers who come in. And they go from school to school, they're wonderful, they do great work. And if you're lucky, if you're a third grade teacher, you're lucky, you know, you might get about 35 minutes of prep time per week that we're providing. So with this, the idea is to bring in some more specialists. And as a parent, and I love this idea of having, we could, I mean, we, there's all sorts of things, but you know, particularly around math, science, engineering, technology, you know, some of the STEAM art, world language, where it could bring some Spanish teachers, and, and teaching at elementary, teams of people going in, and then giving some, giving our elementary teachers some of that prep time that, you know, our secondary teachers have, but our elementary teachers really don't. I've been talking about this for years and years as negotiations, and this is our opportunity to really, from the student perspective, give them these rich academic electives that they could take during school time, and for our teachers to give them some of that much-needed time to do their planning and reflection and grading, and meeting one-on-one with students, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of the, the main difference. Under the terms, we talked about monies raised under this measure shall be authorized to be used only for the following purposes, in accordance with priorities established by the Board to the extent of available funds. Number one, to attract and retain excellent teachers, to expand art and music programs, to enhance math, science, engineering, technology, reading, and writing programs, to maintain smaller class sizes, to increase educational opportunities in world languages. No funds will be spent on administrative salaries or benefits. So this one's very, just the same, this would be an $89 per parcel tax, beginning July 1st, 2024, continuing for a period of eight years, during which time we could show the vote, show our voters, show our community that we're doing what we're saying, we, we, we are doing what we said we were going to do, and before contemplating anything sort of future parcel tax.
I also want to point out, at the elementary school, that the only way teachers get preps is if it's credentialed teachers coming in. So, that.
Yeah.
That lifts it.
Yeah, yep.
Shema, did you have any questions about either of these parcel taxes or comments? No? Okay. All right, anyone else before we vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to approval of updated bylaw 9323, meeting conduct.
I move to approve the updated bylaw for meeting conduct.
I second.
All right, any discussion about this? Yeah, I've been speaking with folks about this, and I've heard a lot of mixed things. You know, some people want us to keep it open for Zoom, others want us to close it down. Spoke to a parent last night, and she was just like, you know, since the pandemic, this is really like her main source of engagement for both city council and school board. She's more involved with the city council, giving comment, it's really hard for her not to be able to do it online with two young kids. So I just wanted to put that, I don't know if anyone else had any other, anything else to add about this?
Nothing I haven't already said.
Yeah.
Beat it. Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, all in favor? Aye, opposed.
Nay.
Oh, yeah, nay as well. All right, so it looks like it passes. Okay, so we will move on to approval of legal services agreement with Franz, Franz Law Group for purposes of social media litigation.
I move to approve.
All right, did you want to speak about this, Matthew?
Yeah, just to give a little, little information here. The, the Franz Law Group and F3, they collaborated in the past around this. And I know Brian DeForrester is here in the audience, too well aware of the, the litigation against Juul and the, the tobacco use. And so ended up with a, there was a mass class action, mass action lawsuit, right? And any district that joined onto that mass action lawsuit received some money from Juul and to, to essentially do some tobacco use prevention education. Fast forward now, Franz Law, Law Group is back with F3, and they're working on a mass action lawsuit against many social media companies, including TikTok, Facebook, YouTube, sort of thing. And the, the idea is that there are not enough adequate controls on, on the social media, particularly with, with young, young children. And the impact that it has had on school district, school districts, including our own, I, I don't even know how to measure it, because every time we're talking about suspensions, expulsions, everything that's coming through, there's some sort of stemming from social media, and it's overwhelming, it's overwhelming our system. And so the, the idea here is to go after, really to, to do some injunctive relief on much tighter controls, as well as, as well as some compensatory damages. And really, what we would do, if we were to receive money from this mass action lawsuit, put it towards mental health, how do we provide additional mental health support for, for our students? And, because it's, it's definitely had an impact. So anyway, there are many, many districts around the state of California, around the nation, who have joined onto this lawsuit. And the, I, my, the recommendation is to approve, approve the attached legal services agreement, and have Petaluma City Schools join on. The pros, there, if, if nothing happens and we don't recover anything, this is a, this case is taken on contingent, contingency, so the school district wouldn't pay anything. If we receive a settlement, the school district, the, I think it's, they're, they're taking a 25% cut of, of the settlement. There, so there's no real risk to the district as far as monetary, the only thing could be a benefit. If we were, if we were to say, you know what, we're just going to sit on the sidelines and not join the mass action lawsuit, if something were to happen, they receive a settlement, Petaluma City Schools would just get nothing. So the recommendation is to join in on this, this, this lawsuit, lawsuit. They've also promised us there's not going to be much staff time needed to, to be a part of this.
I like money, and I like punishing these bad actors, to be honest. I do social media for a living, and I know they're out here to make profit, they're not here for our kids' well-being. Like, they make money off of eating disorders and violence and all these horrible things, and don't hold users to their own standards. So I'm all for this, especially if it's no cost to us.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? Shema, what do you think about this? Do you have any thoughts? No? Maybe? Okay, all right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to comments from the public on discussion information items. There's just one on the amended schedule of fees for use of facilities. So if anyone has a comment about that, come to the front. No? All right, Amanda, take it away.
All right, tonight we present a revised fee schedule for facilities use. This adjusted fee schedule aims to align Petaluma City Schools with the average fees charged by our neighboring districts. Operational direct costs involve the expenses related to supplies, utilities, and services of district employees, all in accordance with the Civic Center Act. These costs are incurred and managed and maintained to maintain our school facilities and grounds. The Civic Center Act in California generally facilitates the shared use of school facilities with community organizations and groups. The primary objective, objective is to promote such utilization without imposing access, excessive financial burden on the school district. The Act establishes a framework for joint use agreements, which may incorporate provisions for cost sharing or fees to offset expenses linked to facilities use. It has been quite a while since we've updated our fees, and we have determined that it has been, allowing facilities use has been at a huge cost to our district.
I think this makes a lot of sense, it still looks like pretty darn affordable rates to me. And as someone who works at a nonprofit, I appreciate that we get, get a little difference from the for-profit.
I also appreciate the, what you put out there, it was very, even for dummies like me, when it comes to numbers, I could understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I first saw this list, I thought this was before rates. This is still, so do, do these calculations cover our costs, or is it, are we still taking?
So this is, I would say that probably in a year from now, we want to reassess. We did take into consideration, we looked at our parity in neighboring districts at what they're charging, but also took into consideration how little we've been charging for the past 10 years. We didn't want to completely shock and awe people, so.
But I think, I think as Amanda shared, the Civic Act, I mean, we're, we want to encourage our community to use the facilities. We have many, you know, nonprofit groups that use our facilities on the weekend, and rent out, rent out the multis, and gyms, and fields, and all, all sorts of things. It's really, we want to encourage that, and also, we don't want it to be a, a big cost, a big cost to the district. It should be, it should be cost-neutral, but we're kind of inching that, that direction. And, and all of our facilities use forums, used to be all paper and would take a lot of time. We're really streamlining that, so that should also help with, with the, the cost from the district's perspective.
And the, what, the Facilitron that was approved, anybody that uses it outside of the school district, they also will pay that cost that will be in addition to. So, we did take that into consideration when setting the fees.
Great, all right, thank you. Okay, future business.
One of the things that came up in office hours for me was, I had a couple people, couple parents, actually, talk about literacy. And they commented on, had we been doing the math assessments, and they were just wondering when literacy was going to be on the front burner instead of the back burner. So perhaps we could chat about that.
Sure. Well, yeah, we can, we can add that to a future, future agenda item, particularly when we start to talk about our math common assessments. And I know when we did our board goals and our board objectives, we talked about, we wanted to see common assessments, starting with math, and then moving into English language arts. And so that's sort of, we can have a conversation about where we're at.
So, are you gonna talk about where we are with math common assessments as well, when you talk about just the? Okay, great, thank you, Ellen, anyone else? Oh, no, you go ahead.
Okay, really quickly, at a, at a, office hours also. We have supposedly had planned librarian presentations, kind of around media literacy, what the libraries do, what they offer, how they go into classrooms. You know, I mean, I think they kind of help with the whole social media problem, and it's- And it's, it just keeps, it just doesn't happen. So I would just like to see a presentation on our libraries, and kind of also like what they do because they're teacher librarians, rather than, you know, so they're certificated and librarians. And so it is different from most everybody else in the county who are basically classified employees. So what does that do to our library program?
Yeah, I think the statistic is there are, there are six teacher librarians in the, in Sonoma County, and all the school districts, and four of them are in Petaluma City Schools, thanks to our, the original parcel tax.
Shamaya, do you have anything that you would like to see discussed on the future meeting? All right, that's great. I would like to hear about, I know we've talked about this before, and it was a big subject of our equity meeting, about the sports fundraisers. And I feel like I still don't have a clear understanding of what these fundraisers are for. Because I know that, you know, the district is contributing more money to athletics this year. But there's still these same fundraisers, and we're hearing different things, like they're being used to pay for referees, or for uniforms, or for equipment, or for all these things. And so it would just be great to know, like, what the district is actually paying for, and then what, what each of these fundraisers are paying for, who's collecting the money, who's like providing oversight. I thought that they're all going to be through RevTrac, but it doesn't seem like they are. So I would just love to get an update on that.
And we could even invite some of the foundations, basically. Okay? An agenda.
Anything else? All right. And we are going to report of action taken in closed session. In closed session, the board retained and directed legal counsel to initiate or intervene in illegal action, social media litigation, by a five-to-zero majority vote. The action, the defendants, and other particulars shall once formally commence, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to effectuate. Wow, this is something going to be a surface of process on one or more unserved parties, or to do so would jeopardize district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiation, negotiations to its advantage. The members voted as follows. Insert roll call. Jen, Quinn, am I doing this right? Jen, Quinn, Pon, Webster, and Cloud all voted in favor of this. Okay, all that to say, we're going to join us. I'm like reading these words, I'm like, does it even make sense as I'm reading it? I don't think so. Okay. Okay, great. And with that, we are adjourned.